That's Fozzy. Yeah, that's a playground there. I'll call the meeting to order, the school committee meeting of January 10th to order at 6:00 PM. We all stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the guide states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ware, you take role?
Your counselor?
Oh, good.
Here.
Um, America?
Here.
Nancy here?
Here. Here.
May I call you?
Here.
Remember Nancy?
Here. Here. Sorry, Ms. Rogers. Student representatives report. Ms. DeBian.
Okay, I have a few announcements. My microphone finally works. That's a shocker. The midterm exams will begin January 18th and end on January 23rd. All test days are half-days, so students will leave school earlier than usual. The West Springfield High School Chorus had the honor to sing the National Anthem during the opening ceremony for the Springfield Thunderbirds on January 6th. Auditions for the Spring Musical Emma will be held in the auditorium Wednesday, January 11th, and Thursday, January 12th, from 2:15 to 4:30. Callbacks are on Friday, January 13th. The CARE Coalition is inviting students to participate in a one-hour focus group to gain information to reduce alcohol and substance use, happening on Wednesday, January 11th at 2:00 PM. Through the Innovation Pathways Program, students were able to enroll in the S.T.I.C.E. early college courses for the upcoming Spring 2023 semester. This opportunity was available to all students looking to take college-level courses and earn college-level credit in high school. Basketball, hockey, wrestling, and swimming have all been doing very well this winter season. Athletes in track and field have broken numerous indoor records as well. The West Springfield High School Chorus will be hosting a talent show on January 26th. More information will come on that. And quarter two and our first semester is closing on January 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on the school committee? Ms. Farrell?
Not a question, but just the winter concert at the high school by the band and the chorus was exceptional. I don't, I think I saw some school committee members there and some central office people, and the students did a wonderful job that evening at the high school. So if you get a chance, tell them we said so.
I will.
I was, I was gonna echo that, and I think, I'm not sure there was a dry eye in the room after the West Side Singers got up with the chorus, and it was just a beautiful testament to inclusion of some of our, our students that have just very different abilities, and it was just lovely. So I totally echo it. It was so much fun, and I was so happy to be able to go and see it.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Thank you. School committee reports. We'll start with budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Budget will meet Thursday, January 12th. At that meeting, we will be updating policy and beginning work on the FY '24 budget. This budget process will be hard. There are many positions funded by ESER, and the funds will not be there forever. We need to look at these positions and make difficult decisions about eliminating some of the positions and moving some to the local budget. So during the next few meetings, we'll be updating the town on the budget and how we're doing. Thank you.
Curriculum and instruction.
At this time, the curriculum and instruction committee does not have a report to make. However, could I make a report on behalf of the Superintendent Search Committee? So on behalf of Kira and myself, as co-chairs of the Superintendent Search Committee, I'd just like to give an update. We began the semifinalist candidate interviews last night, and will continue with interviews on both Wednesday and Thursday of this week. The committee has selected a total of six semifinalist finalist candidates, and at the conclusion of the semifinalist interviews on Thursday night, the committee will recommend two or three finalist candidates to be considered and interviewed by the entire school committee. Dates will be scheduled for school committee members to visit the school districts of the finalist candidates, and the finalists will have the opportunity to spend the day visiting the West Springfield schools. The finalist public interviews will take place, and a superintendent will be named the week of February 13th.
Thank you. Facilities?
Neil will be updating on that.
All right, policy?
We're waiting to hear back from IT and the Budget Committee, Subcommittee.
All right, anyone else, anything else from any members of the school committee? Seeing none, move with approval of open session minutes, December 13th, 2022. Do I have a motion, Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve open session minutes from December 13th, 2022.
Second.
A motion and a second, any additions, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all is in favor, opposed, unanimous. Presentations, Coburn School, Principal Dugan. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present on the accountability data for Coburn Elementary School. Before I begin, I'd like to call attention to both of the vice principals who are here this evening. We have Vice Principal Agostino, Vice Principal Curran. Thank you for being here and for your support. Behind them, we have Lisa DeLonge, who is a parent and a teacher as well in attendance. So thank you all for being here. All right, let's get right into, prior to the MCAS slides, which I have, just where we've been at Coburn. Opening a brand-new building comes with some unique challenges. Can't say enough about the resilience of the faculty as we moved into this incredible site. Some photos from early August before we were allowed access, and then as we see furniture getting put together, full classrooms getting put together. As we moved in in August, within a very abbreviated timetable, the absolute amount of unboxing, of dollies pushed through, of classrooms going from boxes to actual instructional areas. The center photo would be a typical, I, I can't even qualify what that is. That is just trash everywhere and unboxing, and the very next day, the entirety of the hallway is clear. So that goes from everyone pitching in on the faculty, to the custodian staff, to the front office, to administrator, administration, to all the teachers, interventionists, et cetera. So incredible to see the building come together. And then touching up our first, and student arrival, our first PE class. This is taken from the second floor, looking down into the gymnasium. And then a photo I couldn't resist putting in, that of course is Lori Gendro, the secretary, senior clerk there, getting the front ready, working side-by-side with the custodian, who's out of the picture. But I just had to include that. So here we go. Into some MCAS. So grade three MCAS. Let's unpack this a little bit. As you can see, we have 2021 and 22 graphs with the blue, green, orange, and red. To the left of that, we have, from the top down, left, right, exceeding, meeting, partially meeting expectations, not meeting expectations. So we'll go through those a little bit. Number of students' participation rate, based upon school, district, and state. So let's highlight with grade three English in 2022, 25% not meeting expectations, 45% partially meeting expectations, 70 or so percent their total, 30% meeting expectations. When we compare that from previous year, we're pretty flat when it comes to exceeding and meeting expectations, and we gave back a little in not meeting expectations. So as we now take a quick look at mathematics, we'll highlight the other end of the spectrum, where we see 25% combined for exceeding and meeting expectations, with a comparison from the year prior at 17. So we're seeing an increase here. The graph is going in the right direction. But what I really wanted to highlight within mathematics is, from the prior year, we cut the not-meeting expectations, staff cut the not-meeting expectations, I should say, in half. So this would be what we're looking for as we progress, and seeing the graph go in the right direction. As we move into grade four ELA, we can highlight that, in comparison to 2021, we are pretty much in the same ballpark with 25 versus 24%. And then we can see that 21% the year prior to 13% in not-meeting expectations. So the differential there would be in the partially meeting expectations. Again, some work to do here, admittedly, but we're looking at trending in the right directions. These students, of course, are our fifth graders this year. And as we look at grade four mathematics, we can see that 22% last year, 2022, were meeting expectations multiple of times three. That's a nice success story. And then again, when you unpack the bottom column of 23% not-meeting expectations, again, that's cut in half. So trending, again, in the right direction. As we move into grade five, 11% of our students in ELA are meeting expectations. That leaves the balance of 89% in those bottom two categories. When you look further, we did give back from the year prior. Different students, of course, but we're looking at historical trends and to try to stay off that roller coaster and build some consistency within the expectations. Flat within not-meeting expectations year over year. So the wash comes out with partially meeting expectations, where that column does grow. MCAS math, fifth grade, 2022, 13% in meeting expectations doubled from the prior year, and as you can see, 40 to 28%. So that growth did come from the bottom, pushing into partially meeting expectations. And again, graph moving in the right direction. Grade five, science, tech, and engineering, 20% of our students are partially meeting expectations, giving back from the prior year, and, oops, a little bit too fast. And with the students giving back a little from, we're pushing the wrong direction, admittedly, 28 to 36% not-meeting expectations, flat otherwise in partially meeting. So with that in mind, where do we go? Database decision-making, the title of this slide is exactly that. We want to let the data, this is my favorite phrase to use, we let the data do the heavy lifting. We do that a number of ways. We can review our eye-ready data through ELA and math, formative, summative, benchmark assessments, all go into our decision-making. Instructor table and professional conversations, unlocking the, what our educators bring to the table, how they know our students. So in white, the inclusion model is new this year. And also, I wanted to unpack DIBELS, so I have a, a quick view of where we are with the inclusion model. So inclusion comes in a number of different phrases and phraseology, whether it's a push-in or a full inclusion. Right now, we're operating at a partial inclusion. We have most of our specialists, our intervention staff, the box on the left here, our ESL teachers, our special ed teachers, our math interventionists, our reading interventionists, pushing into the classroom to deliver service. Now, the one where I say we're modified is that this year, we've, we've seen an incredible influx of refugee students, of SLIF students, of beginners, and for our ESL, our EL teachers, are moving to pull students out, just to homogeneously group, to deliver services. However, within a full inclusion model, students within the four walls of one classroom would be grouped homogeneously by, by ability in, in our ca, in most cases, to receive instruction from their classroom teacher, from a specialist who pushes into the room, from a para who may support for either EL or math, and then also have some independent center time. What that then does is, it allows us to take the data that is not just done down the hall in isolation, but in through collaboration with all of our instructors, taking the data to make informed decisions, giving all of our, our staff stakes in student learning, to really galvanize differentiated instruction. DIBELS is very exciting. So this is an eye test, admittedly, and I'll zoom in in just a moment. But this gives you a swath of students on the left and a measure from benchmark all the way through December. So let's take a look at what this looks like a little bit closer and makes it readable. So here we can see that this is Ms. Gudnens' class in fifth grade, room 303. And then what we'll look at is oral reading fluency. And we're gonna look at student number one across the board. So student number one's benchmark for oral reading fluency was this student, within a one-minute time measure, was able to read 26 words. Within those 26 words, they read at an accuracy of 65%. 65% of those words were correct. So as we look at this one-minute timed assessment for student number one, we can see that the end of September, that student, after just a few weeks of instruction, went from 26 words to 43 words. But the exciting part is that 65% accuracy went to 91%. And as we assess that student again, within the first two weeks of October, we stayed consistent, and our accuracy stayed fairly consistent in the 90s. And then stayed, for our second measure in October, accuracy stayed in the 90s, and we gained just a couple more words. So from 26 to 48 words, nearly double in just a month and a half, two months. We'll take that. As we stick with student one and move through November, we can see that oral reading fluency, ORF, that one-minute timed, went from 48 to 56, 44 to 62 words within that same minute. But we stayed consistent with our accuracy. So by outlining what this one student can do, moving from just read, the ability to read 26 words within different passages, each of those one-minute snapshot passages are all different. It's not as though the student is building some type of automacy by knowing what's coming. So we could see that repeated through, in this case, a classroom of 18 learners. We're able to use this as a snapshot to inform our decisions on what type of intervention is necessary or meaningful for, in this case, student one. So we don't just do DIBELS in, in our upper grades, so a snapshot from kindergarten. I'm gonna kill you with some very colorful graphs here and unpack them very quickly. We're gonna highlight on the left, letter naming fluency. How many letters do our kindergarteners know when they walk in the door? Well, student 12 in red on the left, knew four. A month later, student number 12 knew 28, and then on the third measure, 40, and now 51. So the color code is below where our expectations are. Yellow is getting close, and green is meeting, blue would be exceeding. So you're gonna say to me, David, there's only 26 letters of the alphabet. What are we doing here? We would repeat that, and how long can we go? That's a common question. I'll save from that. To the right, nonsense word fluency, BOY, beginning of the year. So nonsense words would measure two things. It would measure our phenomes, the initial sounds, the sounds that make up nonsense words. So we can rule out the idea of a sight word. Student, a five-year-old can see the word cat. About 10 times, they have the word cat down. They would just blow through that. But a nonsense word, a word that makes no sense at all, we're looking at what first letter sounds are, or what sounds there are. So when we see a CLS, correct letter sounds, we can see very early in November that we weren't really, we were a lot of red, let's put it that way. We were not where we need to be. But as we see teaching and learning happening, as we get through the first two weeks and the second two weeks of December, we see this graph turning colors. And the really exciting part about this is those, those correct letter sounds move forward to WRC, words read correctly, when they, students can begin to blend. And we see the magic happen of a five-year-old go from not knowing letters to knowing some letters, to knowing sounds, being able to segment and then blend fully. And then if we were in March, this would be full of colors, and hopefully just green and blue on the end, because drive time is January, February, and March, especially in kindergarten, as we go from partial readers or non-readers to full readers, hopefully. So that's some very exciting time for our, for our kindergarten. So DIBELS, again, same one-minute timed, whether it's letter, whether it's nonsense words, et cetera. So we are measuring all the way through the grades. Within the building, a couple of highlights, in addition to the data. Very successful band concert for fourth and fifth grade. We were not only able to host all of our band parents and a few other parents that joined us, but the entirety of the building. Can I just say how refreshing it is to, to be back to in-person everything and to, to offer events like this to the community? It's absolutely fantastic. And of course, where we thought we had a good crowd for our band concert, our first, second, and third grade winter concert, there was, we were out of seats, which was fantastic. We sat for a little over 400. We're also able to incorporate our, our students from the building into this. So we, we couldn't have been happier to present those and look forward to some really fantastic future events as well. One of the last slides I have for you is the collaboration with all the elementary schools, the many hands of West Springfield celebrating the students who reside in West Side, and this is on display in the public library. And perhaps the coldest day of the year that I've been outside for in the evening, standing next to Mrs. Farrell. We had the annual Park and Rec tree lighting, which was, which was really something to see. And here, it was, the students did an awesome job under the direction of Simone. So that's what I have for you on, on data for Coburn School. Again, thank you for the opportunity.
Questions? Ms. Margus?
I just have one question regarding the MCAS data. You compared 21 to 22. Do you have any idea how the scores compare to 19?
I do. So the graph would go out past 19. What I've seen is, we do see 19 higher. And then we have an off-year with 20, with no accountability data. Even 2021 is a stretch to compare 22 with, because it was only, it was a scaled-down MCAS with only one assessment side. Now we're back to two for ELA, two for math, one for science. So 19, we're on that roller coaster. And I think if we go pre-pandemic to look at data, Coburn does show a roller coaster. There are some years of consistency, and, and that's what we need to get back to. And I, what I don't want to do is overly deflate the, the staff, because coming out of the pandemic with, with, you know, remote and then partial remote, and now with what I can only imagine, watching a new building being built and then packing up your classroom at the same time, and trying to focus a group of, you know, 15 to 22 learners on the MCAS assessment, I can't imagine what year, last year was like, very honestly. And, and I recognize that. So I, I was hesitant, very honestly, Ms. Margus, about presenting this to the faculty. And I've done it in isolation, in pockets, but this isn't something that I would do and say, here it is, we can do better. No, we, we have to look at what has happened within Coburn, not only where our student population is, but where our faculty was and where we were presenting. A lot of change, a lot of change, a lot of new, as I like to say. So I, I felt as though the 21 to 22 comparison would be a solid foundation for us to build upon and then celebrate as we accelerate in the future.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yep, Ms. Cor.
Not a question. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all you do.
Of course.
Certainly, you have an incredibly diverse group of children and all kinds of abilities and learnings. So it's pretty remarkable, I think, what, you know, progress gets made on many different levels. I had the opportunity to see that, the hands. And it is a very large art piece for anyone out in the community who hasn't had a chance to go to the, the room at the library, the children's room. But it's beautiful, and it just celebrates all that I feel that there is about West Side, what a vibrant and diverse community we really are. So thank you for highlighting that, as well, as, well as all the art and music, because that's always, you know, it must have just been such a joyful, gigantic room of people.
Yeah, it, it's great. The picture doesn't do the actual visual any justice.
It's beautiful, please.
And to your point, thank you for the kudos, but whether it's the admin team or the full faculty, it is a team effort, so I couldn't be more appreciative of the hard work they, they do each and every day. I get to present, they get to do the hard work, very honestly.
Yep, Ms. Farrell? Mic's already on.
So thank you for your presentation, very thoughtful about where you are, where you're going. And, I mean, in doing this, somewhat little difficult for you, because you weren't there last year, so you don't know exactly when, what went on and how, how things were. And as you said, that transition for students and teachers must have been very difficult. But we look forward to seeing what happens to, at Coburn in the future, so thank you.
Ms. Margus?
And I just want to extend a truly heartfelt thank you to you, your administrative staff, but your entire staff, because opening Coburn School this year was, was an enormous feat. And, you know, it wasn't like the high school, that the, that the building was done, it was all ready to go. It, it was still a work in progress. And, yeah, again, congratulations, but truly thank you to everybody for all their efforts in, in making it what it is today.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been a lot of fun, very honestly. It's different every day.
It's been a lot of fun, but I'm not sure it was a lot of fun for everybody.
Some days, maybe, maybe I did drive home without the radio on occasionally. But honestly, it is, it's challenging, but it's fantastic.
Well, and your positivity was instrumental in keeping this ball going in a, in a positive direction. And it could have imploded, and it didn't. So thank you.
Of course.
Anyone else?
Oh, thank you. In front of you, bookmarks from our students who made those in art. So those are all yours. And I do have a separate set of slides that walks you through that process, as well as highlights some of the, the really fun things that are happening in our art room, which I encourage you all to visit. We're expecting a kiln in two weeks, Dr. Gile, two weeks. So once that's up and running, we will have even more interesting projects to share. So I'll share with those slides this evening or tomorrow morning. That's great.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the interim, the superintendent's report. Personnel report and a budget primer.
So the, the personnel report was for your perusal. I don't know if there's any questions about it. If there's not, I, I do want to talk a little bit about the budget primer, not necessarily in a presentation. I shared the slides with you because I, I wanted to kind of set the stage for the budget season. I was inspired by Adam Torquini's interview, in which he talked about collaboration and communication, and making sure that everybody understands what the process is, and everyone understands what the timeline is. So this slide deck that I shared with you, was shared with the, the directors, was shared with the, the principals. And my ask was for them to take a look at the, the budget primer, make sure that they understood the, the foundation, not the foundation budget, but the foundation of the budget season, how we're gonna work together, transitioning from our interim business manager to our new business manager, and understand what the expectations were for them in the process. Now, also shared with, with them was what we called, Adam and I, a budget template. And we asked the, the principals to really think about the state of their buildings, or the directors, the state of their programs. And to then really think about the needs, the wants, and to look at data and use data to support those needs and wants as they work through the budget process. The, one of the biggest challenges for the business manager, and this was shared with me by Carrie Sheehan, was that in February, during February break, when the budget is really, is being finalized with respect to narrative, the principals often are on vacation, and they're, and they're out of, they're out of touch. So what we, what we asked them to do with this process was to create a narrative that supports the, the asks, the wants, and the needs, and to ensure that that narrative is in a, a format that is able to be shared with the community. So that's kind of the, the foundation of what we're doing right now. And the work now is in the hands of the principals, their teams at the sites. And what they are asked to do, or tasked to do, is think about the needs of the students that are in front of them, to make sure that we are founding those needs and those wants on data, and then to provide narrative that will substantiate and rationalize the, the budget for work at the site, excuse me, at the district level. And just so you know, Adam Torquini is starting on Tuesday, and they are getting right to business. Julia and, and Adam will be visiting sites and speaking to principals, and we are gonna get right into it, so that we are, we don't lose any time in the transition.
Questions? Ms. Farrell?
Is there overlap with Carrie and Adam or no?
Thank you. That's a good question, Nancy. The, what we did was we, we sat down with the superintendent of Granby and Carrie and Adam, myself, and we talked about just that need. You know, how can we support both districts? How can we provide a solid transition for Adam coming in, for Carrie moving out, which he is really excited to do? And to make sure that the needs of both districts are met. So we have, while he was employed in Granby, had him for five days. And we'll finish that up this week. And then after, when he's employed by us, we're going to pay those five days back and he will go back to Granby and he will pay those five days back to ensure a smooth transition. You're welcome.
So just as, now I'm only one member of the school committee, but just when I look at the budget for town, I put together and I'll do the same for the school side, I don't really want to see a lot of new stuff. For one, we're in a tough economic climate as it is. We had to do a lot with taxes this year as we moved in from 2022 to 23. But also we have that two and a half million hanging over our head with ESER. So I would struggle approving new positions without a plan of how that ESER kind of winds down. So just be mindful of that when they're speaking with principals. And I really want to see new asks without some consolidation of funding on the other side.
Understood. And I assume you're talking positions, FTEs.
Yeah.
Right? Because we know that ESER can be used for other things. And so there's a mindfulness that we have discussed at the COT level and with the principals about just that. A Google form was sent out to really have principals and directors think about what we could use those funds for other than FTEs. Because we all know there's 50-plus positions very, you know, very throughout the district that are on ESER.
I think it'd be helpful to, as moving to a budget sub, to see kind of a breakdown of ESER positions, where they are school by school. I know we've, I, for one, the committee as a whole has asked year after year, and we never seem to get it during budget time, a breakdown. But I think the council would appreciate this as well. A breakdown of budget for each, like a school by school breakdown of positions in the school and the budget for the school. There's sometimes we've gotten it, but it's after budget season's over, which isn't really helpful. I think, at least for me, it'd be nice to see what's at each school and how the money's being spent there. And also, you know, I think for the committee and the council, I know it would be helpful to see, you know, how the budget's being split up among the schools. I mean, you get the buck and it's a million land, I just kind of glaze over. So to see it easily booked out of, this is Fozzie, this is Tatum, this is Coburn, there's 26 teachers and 30 paras, whatever it is, at each school, I think is a lot more manageable for folks that don't have the financial background.
Understood. And so what I heard just now, though, was a request for the, the positions that are on ESER and then a breakout of positions by school.
Yes.
So just those two things.
Yeah.
Understood. Okay.
Anyone else? Ms. Farrell?
It's a little off topic, but related to budget with ESER. What about the tutoring program? Is that up and running?
That is, Dr. Guile, you ready to rock and roll on that? Is that, is that part of your presentation?
It is not, but I can certainly address the question.
Well, good, speak to it then.
Yeah, it, it is. We, well, let me rephrase that. In several of the schools, we are, we have gone through the process of identifying site coordinators. They are working with our district coordinator to create the programs based on their, the needs of their schools. Specifically, the high school, middle school, John Ashley and Coburn all are really ramping up and recruiting teachers for the after-school program. So still some work to be done, but our goal is to really be up and running by February 1 with that program. So making good headway, it's maybe a little slower than I had initially anticipated, but we're getting there. A lot of great ideas. Those who want to participate, those being the, the staff, have some really great ideas. So now we're, we're really moving into that, getting teachers on board or staff on board and then getting the students, identifying the students who will participate.
To that point too, and Dr. Guile, you have done a fantastic job, you know, getting the ball rolling. But I would say one of the things that I've heard a lot of is a need from the principals to differentiate based on the needs of the kids in their building, right? So Coburn is not, Memorial is not, et cetera. So there's really a, some, some thoughtful discussion at the sites of what, what we need to do for the kids that are in front of us there.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Anything else from you? All right. Assistant Superintendent's report, we have facilities and Nancy's favorite capital.
I am honored to be presenting. Actually, it was, it was a beautiful day yesterday. The parking lot has opened. Thank you. Yes. It's one of the happier moments of, of my year so far to be able to put that behind us. In all, in all seriousness, though, full disclosure, still work to be done. So currently, it's open. We, we welcomed vehicles and buses and it was a sight to be seen. And basically where we're at now, they're finishing up the install, installing of pavers to the walkways. There's still work to be done, but basically everything's going to be on hold until the spring. Exterurally, there's still, they're going to put up some decorative fencing on Lathrup Street that'll be installed. And then they'll do the, the second layer of pavement in the spring and then add all of the, the what, all of the landscaping. Thank you. Interiorly speaking, we are, we are down to single digits on the punch list. The punch list is a reflection of items that needed to be addressed that maybe didn't meet the standard amongst the conversation between the design team and the, and the school department. So those, those items are being addressed and will, will be wrapped up as soon as possible as Mr. Dugan mentioned, the kiln's on its way, two weeks out. And moving on to capital projects.
Can we just stop for questions just on?
Oh, yes, I apologize.
Ms. Farrell?
Since the parking lot is finished, does this mean we don't need CVS parking anymore?
I, I would say yes to that. Yeah, I, I would say everything is returned to the new normal, I suppose. Yeah.
So can we cancel that contract with CVS?
I'll talk to Kate, but let's make sure that we don't truly need it because we have contractors that park there too, so.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's a fair point. And then in the spring, when they go to lay down that second layer, I assume there's going to be.
I'll have Kate check with Doug and we'll see before we just walk away and then get in a fight in, in April. Short money at this point. Any other questions about Coburn construction? None? Okay.
All right, capital projects. So just wanted to revisit, revisit them in terms of what's currently happening during this fiscal year. We did get an update from Ben Paquette regarding the exterior painting. There was a winning bid of 115,000 to address the exterior painting needs at both Tatum and John Ashley. The middle school roof repair, 40% complete. I think that's outstanding, given the work that they did over the course of the fall. They will be back in the spring and they'll wrap up that project. And then we're moving forward with Clark Field turf replacement. As you can see, the bids will go out in January and I being Ben Paquette will be working with the landscape architect on those specs and the design changes. And then lastly, relative to FY23 projects, Central Park Athletic Fields, terms and conditions are being finalized on this project. And then they will be moving forward with that project to the cost of $130,000 or approximately. So.
I think that project, project will be exciting for actually the whole town. Is there any way you could tell people about it? Just what the central?
Yeah, I mean, we gotta, we gotta come up with a better name too. That's kind of a placeholder name.
Because I don't know that many people really know even.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're just, well, it started originally out as a park and rec project. It's kind of been transferred over to central maintenance and it is really schools. It's the fields behind the middle school. So I think we can come up with a better name and put that out there, what we're doing.
Okay.
And we've been back and forth a bit with the designer. They have some concerns because it was a landfill. They have concerns of warranty issues if they've done other landfills where there's been things like cars that shouldn't have been in them, but in them, and as they collapse, the field collapses. So they did a ton of boring throughout, we don't, ours was truly just a yard waste stump dump. So they have less concerns, but it was an issue we went back and forth with. We originally budgeted this. We got the designs and the contracts like early in the spring. And we budgeted it through this past budget, but we've been kind of back and forth with them over that, for those issues. But we should, we have them settled out now and they'll hopefully get to work soon. And this is just the design though first.
Yeah.
They designed the whole thing.
I just didn't know if people knew about it and, I mean, it's exciting to come for us.
Yeah. I mean, if, if things work out, we can align funding, we would probably be the premier for at least, you know, Hollywood schools in Western Mass and not Western Central Mass, the premier athletic facility with additional turf fields and lit fields. Be great for our, our student athletes, also the whole community because everyone will be able to use it.
I agree. That's why I asked, so people would know.
And we do, we're going to upgrade, I talked to Stephanie today, we're upgrading our camera system at Clark. Ideally, I would love to have that open all the time for folks. We've just had issues with vandalism and we have a camera system that you can't really see a lot. So when we have it open and we have cameras that work there all the time, I mean, there will likely be vandalism. It's, you know, it's kind of just, it happens. But we'll have a system that will be able to see it and, and that turf will be insured as well.
So this Central Park Athletic Fields, is this the baseball, softball, football field area? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, the lower, the lower field.
So will the baseball and softball be done over as well?
Yeah, yeah.
So all, all of that area?
Yes. So the whole lower section, they're going to realign the baseball field and the softball field. And then the outfield will be multi-use. Probably online, so they'll just be painted when they want to be used.
So those will be baseball and softball fields?
Yeah. And then the next phase of that project will be looking at what to do with Ted Smith. If we replace that track or if we don't replace the track, we have a larger multi-use, likely a soccer slash football field there that we can do more with. So it's looking at a second track, what's the cost going to be to replace that? And if we can get more, you know, part of it is to look at too, attracting more tournaments because that's the revenue center for the, for the schools and the park and rec as well to be able to bring people in to have really three plus turf fields to use. And ideally, we're going to get pricing when we do the bid for Clark Field, we're going to, if we're going to do an add alternate to replace the track at the same time. Since the costs are coming in less than what we budgeted, they, when we talked to the, the people from AstroTurf, wherever they were from, they said if you can afford it, do it all at once because you just have the whole thing, whole facility closed for the summer and you don't have to replace the track in a couple of years. Well, they won't be replaced, it should be resealed, but you, and you had to close it to do it. So ideally, we can get that all done this summer.
I, to the point that you made, you know, Vicki Connor, when she served as Parks and Rec Director, you know, brought the idea, the proposal to us. She shared some renderings. I, I could probably find them in my, my drive somewhere. I'd be glad to share them with everybody, what I have. And then, you know, I know things changed when Parks went left rec, so.
Yeah. And that's why kind of Bannon's working more. And it is a big, it's going to impact the schools.
Correct.
So we're going to make sure.
And, and you know, Ben Paquette and, and Dr. Guile have been working, you know, hand in hand on the capital, and so it makes sense for them to continue to collaborate. I'm glad to share that information with you.
Anyone else? Anything else, Neil?
That's it. In terms of updates, we later in the agenda will address the FY24 proposed capital projects.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll do Unified In-Site Geovisual Enrollment Tool. It sounds like an expensive IT thing. Stephanie?
This is, should be really simple. We, the school business office actually purchased this tool last December and we've been working to implement it for the district. It's a tool that will do some enrollment prediction for the district, which might provide some useful data. And in part of that project, there's a map component, so we had to go through the street listing that divides all our addresses in town to the different elementary school districts and finalize a map because we need this map for this tool to be able to work and get our enrollment prediction data coming back to us. So I'd like to kind of move forward with the map because it's kind of a project I started a long time ago. We had made a draft of the school district map that we could never release because it's only a draft and I would like to move forward and finalize it as the official record of the elementary school districts, kind of throw the street listing away. We use the map. If there's changes, we make them on the map. And then going forward, we can share the map online. When people are interested in moving to West Springfield, they can actually see a map of where, you know, the elementary school districts align, online property viewer, they could look up their parcel and that information would be there as well. So I think it's a kind of a no-brainer to just move forward and I just needed, we needed to go through this to, to meet with you all about it, so.
Any questions? Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve the school district boundary map as the official record of the district boundaries.
Second.
A motion and a second. There is a map that was in your packet, nice and colorful. Are there any questions, comments, concerns on that with Stephanie here? Ms. Farrell?
So you just took our present street listings and put them in, into the map so that there aren't any, you didn't make any changes?
We did not make any changes, right. Yep.
So this is a visual representation of what we're already using?
Right. Yep, exactly.
Any other questions? Oh, yeah, Ms. Marcus?
So using that geovisual enrollment tool, can you easily shift boundaries?
Yes. So hopefully in, within probably a month or so, I'll be able to meet with you again and show you what the tool can actually do. So it maps all the students and characteristics on a map and then you, you can draw a boundary and it will tell you this will be the ramification, this, how many staff would need to change between buildings, what students will be going where. And it looks out many years in the future to show us, you know, what we can expect to see, so.
Wow, great.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank you, Stephanie, for your collaboration on this. She was pretty tenacious with keeping it on the front burner as we transitioned with the business manager and from, from, from Tim to, to me in this interim role. And so I really thank you for that and the work that you did to make this a reality and to keep the, the tool on the front burner so that we have this to use as we move forward with the feasibility study and the thoughts around the future of the district. So thank you very much.
Ms. Levis?
I know when we bought this tool, it was somewhat expensive.
Yeah.
Do we keep, now this is our tool to keep or do we have to, is it a budget?
It's a yearly renewal. So we've, we're paying for year two, but then we'll be able to use the tool this year and decide whether we want to move forward with it in year three and four. I think we'll find it's useful, but I don't know how long, you know, we'll need it if we're, with the feasibility study. I think this will all kind of work together, but maybe we'll have some conclusion after that study, so.
Do we have any idea what the budget implication would be?
It's about $10,000 a year. Yeah, the tool.
And I would suggest that. And I would suggest that with ESER 2 and ESER 3, we would be able to push this forward for at least a couple of years.
Yep.
And really, especially if we judge its efficacy as what we want to move forward.
Anyone else? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Stephanie.
Yep.
Proposed fiscal year '24 capital projects. We have two of them, both the middle school, a chiller upgrade for $1 million, and the removal of an oil tank for $150,000. A motion to approve the projects for our capital. Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve FY24 capital projects, the chiller system upgrade for $1 million, and the removal of oil tanks for $150,000.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Farrell?
Does a chiller system mean?
Yeah, it's, exactly, it is. It, it's the climate-controlled HVAC system. So, really updating the outdated system with a new, a new one.
In my eyes, that's still a new building. I feel, I feel like we shouldn't be replacing all this, like, it's.
New for $1 million, new chiller for $1 million. But it is, it's over 20 years old now, which scares me, because I was going to say it's great, and it was brand new.
I don't, I don't know if it's relevant in the conversation, but I do appreciate, in one of the five-year plans, capital project plans, this was on, I believe it was originally FY27. However, with the feasibility study occurring with the elementary, for the elementary schools, that stripped away a lot of the projects that were on that capital projects list, creating somewhat of a void in the years, if that makes sense. So, we just felt like, as a facility sub, it made sense to move that down to FY24. So, that, that kind of captures the rationale behind why it's up for discussion.
I believe, for the time being, it's the last big expense at the middle school. So, besides the roof at some of the elementaries, that's one of the last large expenses we have, we have as a capital for schools. Yep, Dean?
Will be taken off the rooftops units that are there now. I, I think that goes hand in hand with some of the problems we've been having with the roof leaking, too, also when you have rooftop units on there. I think it's a good idea, because we can't keep putting Band-Aids on roofs. So, we got to fix it and fix it right. And that's why I totally support this, because them units caused, you know, I mean, what, 20 years the school was, you know?
22, yeah.
Well, I, you know, and then just, when you have rooftop units, you do have some leaking, and, and that's causes a bigger problem. So, get them off, fix that roof, and hopefully, we can get 25, 30 years out of it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else? All right, to approve the chiller and the oil tank, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, thank you. Public comment? Seeing none, the next school committee meeting will be January 24 at 6:00 PM. I'll have a motion to, Nancy, I'll just let you make the motion.
Move to go into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining, the nurses, MNNA, and not to reconvene in open session.
Second.
A motion and a second, Ms. Rogers, give a roll vote for me, please.
Yes.
Colleen Marcus?
Yes.
Nancy Farah?
Yes.
Kathy Levin?
Yes.
Diana Klein?
Yes.
Robert Nancy?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.